At this point, I'd like to ask Pastor Jackson if he would lead us in vocation.
Father, we come before you right now in the name of the Lord, giving you praise, glory, and honor. We thank you, Lord God, for putting your mighty hand upon Baldwin Park, Father God, as city council mayor, and our school district, Father God. We're asking you, oh God, to put your hands upon the police department as they are roaming around to protect and to serve life here. Our fire department as well, Father God. There are many fires that have taken place up in Northern California, and diversity is at play. Poverty is being lost to animals as well. So we're asking you, Lord, for your divine help on that. Our school district, Lord, where there's controversies about the virus and the shots and the masks, Lord, that we're asking you to put this thing together, Lord God. Our business, Lord God, I'm asking you to prosper the businesses, Lord God. In the name of the Lord, we pray. So we give you thanks for everything. Give us wisdom and knowledge and understanding. Don't forget our military, Lord, those that have lost their lives over in Afghanistan, Lord. Don't forget, Lord God, all the people that are there that are struggling, Lord God, and what is going on in the airlift and the war that has been over, where other things might be taking place. We're here in a comfortable city, but it's not over with just yet. Give our president wisdom and knowledge and understanding and how to govern this state. In the name of the Lord, we pray. Amen.
City manager, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, Mayor. Please raise the flag, put your hand over your heart. Begin. The flag, United States of America, the republic for which stands a nation under God, divisible, Best of its world.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Daniel Damian?
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez?
Present.
Mayor Protema Alejandra Avila?
Here.
And Mayor Emmanuel Estrada?
Here. Thank you for that, city clerk. Attorney, is there anything to report out from closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did consider several items in closed session, but we took no final action, therefore no reportable action. And that concludes my report.
Great, thank you. And so at this moment, I'll make a mo- I will make a motion to adjourn our special meeting. Can I get a second, doc? Any objections? If not, our special meeting is adjourned. And we move on to our announcements. And I believe we have a presentation by Benjamin Martinez and, of course, our city attorney, Robert Tefoya.
Mr. Mayor, if we, before we do that, if I can close in memory?
Yes.
Thank you. Last evening, we met a, we lost another great man unexpectedly, our former colleague and friend, you know, from the city of Azusa, councilmember Uriel Macias. Not only has he been serving his great city for, since 2007, he was a war veteran with the Navy, served in Afghanistan for about eight, eight months or so. So I'd like to request that, you know, we, as a city, send proclamation over, and also if we can lower the city flags in his honor. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, councilmember Damian?
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to close on behalf of Jin Fang, who passed away on Monday. Mr. Fang was a wonderful man who was always helping others at his apartment complex by taking them to doctor's appointments and helping them with translations. My sincere condolences goes out to our finance director, Rose Tam, and her family for their great loss. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for that. And of course, our condolences go to our, our chief of finance, Rose Tam, and of course, the city of Azusa. So we should, I agree with councilmember Hernandez, we should be sending out our proclamation. And I, you know, I didn't get to meet our colleague in Azusa, but I did hear great things about him. And I know that he was even deployed while he was a council member, so very committed to his community and his country.
Mayor.
Yes, Mayor Protem?
I, I'd like to give my condolences to Rose. I'm really sorry for your loss and your current health. Also, my condolences to the family.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
Yes, thank you. I'd also like to extend my condolences to Rose on the passing of her father. I know how, what a great and immeasurable loss that is. And so my, my prayers to the, to Rose and her family as they go through this difficult time. And I also want to extend my condolences to the Macias family. Councilman Macias, you know, was, was a great servant. And for his community, we were elected in 2007. And, you know, I got to see my colleague serving this city with great passion and enthusiasm and a great heart, as well as his country. Like you mentioned, Mayor, he did go off to serve, well, he, he was a veteran and was active during his time as a councilman and returned home. And we were so happy when he was back. And he just had such a great love for his community, but also his family. He was so proud of his wife and his children. And it was just shocking to hear about his passing. So, you know, still very much processing that. Fifty-one years old, very young, with so much life in him. And so I just want to extend my condolences and my prayers to the Macias family and also to the Azusa family, because I know that they're really reeling over that loss as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. At this moment, I will hand it over to our city attorney and our director of community enhancement.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and city council. As I begin the presentation, I wanted to thank our, our city attorney and our, Robert Tefoya and our housing manager, Carol Averill, in assisting in the preparation of this effort. And it's not just this presentation, but ongoing all the efforts that we've been working on in this regard. I'll do the presentation and then Robert and I are available for questions afterward. The presentation tonight is related to our rent stabilization ordinance and, and also eviction and other related subjects. I wanted to give some background, the national and sort of state outlook. You might have heard that the federal moratorium, this is for the residential market, the federal moratorium on evictions that, that the CDC had declared was, was found unconstitutional by the U.S. Supreme Court just a few days ago on August 26th. The California moratorium, the California moratorium on eviction still remains in place through the end of this month, September 30th. So, the county of Los Angeles moratorium on evictions and rental increases also in place through the end of this month, September 30th. And lastly, the Baldwin Parks moratorium on evictions and rent control increases in any amount remain in place until the end of September 30th, 2021, or later if, you know, additional action is taken by the California state government. So, moving forward, evictions for non-payment would be able to be pursued on October 1st for tenants pursuable to eviction laws. However, if you're a low-income tenant below 80% of area median income, you would have six months to obtain rental assistance before an eviction could be considered. But, but if you are not low-income, then, then, you know, the evictions could be pursued next month. These dates and situations could change, however, due to future federal or state action to extend moratoriums on evictions or rental increases. So, so this is still in flux, but this is, as we understand the lay, lay of the land today. The commercial market, we, there still is a California ban on evictions for commercial tenants for non-payment of rent due to COVID through the end of this month, September 30th. And the, and we know that this law allowed local jurisdictions to ban commercial evictions, which the city of Baldwin Park did last, last year. There has been no rental increase caps put in place for commercial properties. So, after discussing the outlook, I wanted to get into, again, sort of a, a review of our rental stabilization ordinance here passed in December of 2019 in the city of Baldwin Park, ordinance 1447. This ordinance applies to all residential units built prior to January 1st, 1995, but it does exempt mobile home spaces, duplexes, trailers, trailer spaces, single-family homes, and transient housing. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm on slide six for the person that is working the slides. Baldwin Park, yeah. Thank you. So that, there was slide before, please. So, the base rent, the rent in effect, the, the RSO restricts rents, and the base rent, when you, when you apply the ordinance, is the rent that was, what was being charged one year prior to the, when the ordinance was put into effect. So, that's essentially December of 2018. And that rent cannot be increased. It's, it's capped by CPI. It's a maximum of 3% during any one-year period. But the landlord in the situation could always increase 1% in a 12-month period if CPI is lower. But, all that to be said, essentially, it's a 3% cap. You can't charge additional rent beyond 3% increase in a one-year period. And that rent is, is based on the rent that was being charged one year before the ordinance was put into effect at the end of 2018. That would be the 10, end of 2018, because it was the end of 2019 when the city council adopted the ordinance. Just cause evictions still applies to all residential units and prevents landlords from evicting tenants without just cause and relocation and moving expenses for tenants in good standing at the time of eviction. The, we, we've been into this ordinance now, the RSO, so it's been about, we're approaching two years. It's kept us busy. This is a new activity in the, in the city, in the department. And we've, we've dealt with it with existing staff resources. In 2020, you can see on the next slide that staff assisted 50 tenants. These, these include rental increases, evictions enforcement, other, and other situations, unlawful evictions. In the current year, the number's risen, and we're not done with this year yet. So we're talking 90 tenants in 2021. We also have landlord inquiries, and those have grown as well from 20 to 21, from 18 landlords to 29 landlords. We're trying to get the word out as much as possible and answering their questions as well. And you can also see, we, we, the ordinance charges a rental registration fee. We collected almost $30,000 in 2020, but that amount has dwindled in 2021. You know, it's, it's reflective of our need, and I'll talk about it later in the, in the report, to, to get some assistance in collecting that fee. Frankly, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a chore that we need some, I, I would recommend we get some help in that area, because right now, it's, it's sort of a staff-intensive task. And I'll talk about that a little bit later in the report, how I would recommend or pursue a better way to collect those red, rent registration fees. Other activity related to the ordinance, we plan to mail out postcards in early this month, and getting the word out on the RSO, what it means to tenants and landlords. We are seeing and doing social media outreach on city website, Facebook. You'll see in the next few slides, a couple of flyers from the Housing Rights Center that, that are being held in our city during September and October for tenants and landlords to learn about eviction protections, rental assistance, and fair housing rights. And then, we also are, this council approved funding for a legal services program also for tenants and landlords. And just yesterday, we were able to make contact with a nonprofit organization, and we are in talks with them. And I hope to bring a contract forward that would, in short, provide those specialized types of legal services to our, to our residents when they, when they need them. Our city attorney has done a yeoman's job here in enforcing our, our, our ordinance, our rental stabilization ordinance, and, and also eviction protections. But he cannot and should not defend all residents in their own individual cases against, against landlords. So, we, we really want to bring on this nonprofit agency to assist us in those efforts. The next slide is just a draft. We're gonna make it a lot better. But the idea is to put a draft out there to talk about our rental stabilization ordinance, the eviction moratorium, and also the rental, the state assistance that is available, $5 billion. And I think we've all heard on the news how that $5 billion figure is out there, but the expenditure on that money has been, been very low. So we're gonna continue to get the word out on that. And the next slide is the, some of the, the flyers that are out there on social media. Again, October 26th, Baldwin Park landlords, we're gonna have a workshop. And then, September 28th, a workshop for Baldwin Park tenants. The idea in bringing this nonprofit legal services center, also, I had some very good discussions with them yesterday about having additional clinics for, for tenants and landlords as well, and also helping, that they could also help get the word out. So, we really, we need, we need more resources in this. It seems like everything we do in, in the Department of Community Development, we need partners. We can't do it alone. We can't do it, you know, just here from City Hall. We need to have these, these nonprofit partners, community partners to assist us. So we're, we're very happy in, you know, being able to find these partners. You can see the Housing Rights Center is the one that is gonna be helping us with this, with these workshops in September and October. Also, we, we've been monitoring the progress of our ordinance, and, and we've noticed some areas in which we would like to bring to the city council for future consideration. We would like to consider a types of amendments that would bar any type of fraudulent activity or representations resulting in a tenant being evicted or made to leave from a controlled unit, including fines, relocation fees, and possible misdemeanor protection. The, the ordinance, like I said, it's been out there almost two years, and we are seeing some situations where landlords are, are trying to get by the ordinance creatively. And we'd like to close those gap, gaps in, in the protection of the ordinance where possible. We'd also like to look at the potentiality of amending the ordinance to prohibit landlords from artificially raising rents by charging for parking, waste disposal, water, or other expenses included, included in the rental contract. So, these are just two examples. We might have others. And we would like to, at a future date, bring these for more in-depth discussion and consideration in amending the RSO with the city council. Like I mentioned before, we, we need some help collecting these RSO registration fees. I've identified a specialized consulting firm that can do a much better job in not only collecting the fees, but also identifying the landlords, which is also, currently, we're, we're subjugated to just using our business license program. And that, that isn't necessarily comprehensive of all the landlords in the city. So, I'm gonna enter into those discussions and, and hopefully bring a contract that we would have to pay for the service, but in the end, it would be, it would still be much financially better for the city to, to get that service and collect much more registration fees, even though we'd have to pay a service fee to do that. And lastly, I talked about contracting with a nonprofit organization, provide additional legal services. And we've identified some, some good partners with outstanding reputation that are already servicing the entire Los Angeles area, including Baldwin Park. But we wanna, we wanna look at even providing more specialized services with these, with these nonprofit entities. Lastly, I'll close with the fact that assistance is available now. Rental and assist, utility assistance is available to Baldwin Park landlords and tenants. We're gonna be, I mentioned, we're gonna be getting the word out in a strong way this month, we're in through, through mailers, social media, and also visits to actual properties and distribute, distributing materials. So, you know, $5 billion available, and we need to work hard to encourage everyone to take advantage of that, of that, of that grant money to catch up on rent and utility, your utility payments. There is FHA insured mortgage-backed assistance for even homeowners that were impacted by COVID-19. And the city council took action to provide CDVG CARES Act rental assistance funding earlier this year for, for businesses and, 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 you know, renters. And so, we're also looking at that, again, a challenge with staff resources, but we're looking to implement those programs as well. And then lastly, the legal assistance, we have $50,000 to, to work with at this point in that regard. So, happy about the progress. We've been able to help a lot of people, clarify a lot of situations. And, but we need to bring on more partners, more resources. We need to ramp this effort up, because we know a potential tsunami is facing us at the end of, I said that September 30th date, like, how many times? Six, seven times? So October could be precarious. But we're also hopeful that maybe there's state or federal action later on this month that could perhaps, perhaps, you know, push out these deadlines on, on eviction moratoriums. I'll stop my presentation at this point. I don't know, I don't know if the city attorney has anything to add, or we are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. I really don't have very much to add, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to really congratulate Ben and Carol for what they're doing, because many cities that take on this kind of endeavor, like this council has done, rental stabilization ordinance, a lot of times, they have a whole separate department that does that. And Ben and Carol have been able to take that on along with their existing duties. And they've just really done a great job. So I just wanted to thank them. And it's always a pleasure working with them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you to Ben, sorry. And of course, Carol, I know Carol, Carol and, and our city attorney have been working diligently. I've been meeting with tenants that inquire about their, you know, about the concerns that they're having or the issues that they're facing, you know, as renters. And I bring Carol in, and she listens, and she takes notes, and then she hands everything over to you. And then, you know, we've been successful in, in a lot of things. And I think as of recently, we stopped an eviction, because it was a, it was a, it was an unlawful eviction. So, so we're doing everything we can to, we, as a, as a city.
Mayor?
Yes. Well, yeah, give me a second. So, you know, so very thankful for city staff. I think, you know, it makes sense to start considering strengthening our, our RSO and seeing how, you know, how we can make it better, so that there's no loopholes, and there's nothing, and that, you know, we're showing to, show the community that we're serious about this. So I did want to ask you about some, some of these things. And I know that you touched on the topic of working with a nonprofit. So, would that nonprofit start taking over these complaints that they're having, that tenants are having about their landowners?
In, in short, we would still handle the, with the city attorney's assistance, the, the complaints against, that, that go against our ordinance, our RSO. But the, we also run into other related types of complaints that are not, that not fall under the charge of our RSO. We would defer and, and refer those complaints to the nonprofit.
Yeah, okay.
But, but it happens both ways. The nonprofit might get types of complaints regarding to our RSO, and though they would refer those back to us. So, we really are trying to create a contract where it's a collaboration, and no one's falling through the cracks. If it, if it's in our house, we'll handle it. If it's in their house, they'll handle it, and we'll work together.
So is it possible for, for, so one of the ideas, because I know Robert is very busy, and it seems that our count is going up on these, and we have to act fast. Potentially, with our, with our, with city funding, we can hire a specialized, or one of our on-call attorneys that are specialized in housing, and have them take care of these, these complaints, where the city is just trying to jump in and enforce that ordinance. And if we can't use any of the current funds, maybe we can use some of that ARP for that.
Thank you.
And then one more thing, I think you touched on it. You mentioned the, the postcards. So I just want to make sure that they are, you know, that they're easy to read and easy to understand, so that people can just get, understand what's needs, what, what is needed to be understood, and have the access to the link, so that they can go on and apply for whatever resources they need.
Yes, Mayor, and we also would do it in multiple languages, of course.
Okay, thank you. And then, Councilmember Garcia?
So Ben, I'm so glad that you mentioned and you repeated, you know, the, the tsunami that we might, you know, that we are possibly anticipating in the September, October timeframe. And I wanted to ask you if, have we established a hotline, or like an email, a website, or link in on our website, so that we can capture any renters and landlords who need assistance in keeping their housing?
Yes, thank you for the question. And that's, we, we plan to do that with our own resources and alone. However, now that we're talking with a potential partner, I wanna talk in the next week or two about how we can do that collaboratively. But yes, the idea is to have that outline, I'm sorry, that hotline, where people can leave a message or call us, or, or, or leave any, or send an email. And, and so someone's, someone's immediately responding. If they're not picking up the phone immediately, they're immediately respond to that same day. So, we're working out the mechanics of that. But yes, that's, that's the idea. And, and this postcard, I call it a postcard, it could become a flyer. But this, this information that will be sent out, it's gonna, it's gonna be a comprehensive mailer. So, we really plan to get the word out in September.
Okay, great. Yes, because I think that the hotline that was established, and the, the, you know, link email that was established at the beginning of COVID to help our families with any assistance that they needed, I think that it was definitely a lifeline for, for many, when it came to food vouchers, and, you know, housing costs, and utilities, and just any assistance that they needed at the time. So, I'm glad to hear that you're working on the mechanics of that. And our Recreation and Community Services, they facilitated the hotline the first time around. And so, you know, maybe asking them how they did around, and so, you know, maybe asking them how they did that, and like you said, working with a nonprofit will kind of build, build in the capacity. The other thing I wanted to say is, I do agree that we need to be providing as much protections to, or as many protections to renters in our community. But I also don't want to ignore that property owners in our city are being as impacted. And let's say there's a scenario, which is very common, I see it pretty often in our community where there's like a property owner who has owned their home for many years, possibly decades in, in the city. They rent out, you know, part of their home to the renter, and they rely on that for paying the mortgage. And so, you know, we can't, we can't ignore that the property owners are going to need assistance as well. And I'd like to know, you know, how, how are we, like, let's say we are facilitating the renter have getting, accessing the assistance financially. How are we ensuring that that assistance that, you know, is being handed is actually going to the landlord or the property owner? Because like I said, you know, it's a tsunami, but it's, it's coming in waves and it, you know, and it's like the renters, it's property owners, and, you know, I just don't want to leave anybody out of this, of this equation of these considerations. So how are we, are we involved in that at all to ensure that the property owner is actually receiving the rent? Or do you know what the process is on that, since we're talking about, you know, what we anticipate?
So I can answer broadly, thank you, that the, the assistance is available to landlords and tenants. And Carol, I don't know if you can speak to, again, the mechanics of that assistance, that online application any more than I can, but, but essentially you apply, whether it's the tenant or the landlord, and that is, you know, through that application and that process, it's assured that the, the funding is, is going to the correct situation. If the tenant's applying, the, the funding is going to go towards the payment of rent to the landlord. If the landlord applies, then they would have to verify that they were owed the rent, and it would be, the payment would be paid to them. So payment will be made to them. So we, that's not, that's the state, state program, that's not the City of Baldwin Park program. But we're, we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, quickly become experts in that as well and assist people through that process. If they have any questions, we, we'll look into those questions and those processes. But yeah, the program does assure that the assistance goes to the, to the right place.
Can you bring that information back to us, Ben? Because, you know, we have the ARP funds, and we want to be able to step in and provide assistance where there are any gaps in the state program. And I know that some of the property owners who lost income during COVID, they're not going to be able to recoup that through the state program, not in all cases. So I just want to be able to anticipate, like I said, you know, take into consideration some of these property owners in our city. I, I wouldn't, I would want to be able, I would want us to be able to at least offer some assistance, you know, if, if they don't qualify for some of the state programs or if they don't meet specific criteria, and be able to offer assistance because, you know, there are families in our community, just like, just like the renters in our community. So anyway, I'll look forward to getting more of that information at, at a, you know, in the very near future so that we can anticipate and we can allocate some of these ARP funds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Burtin.
Thank you. I want to thank Ben and Carol and Attorney Tofoya. You guys have actually been working diligently with the families that have come to ask for help, and it is a great program. And unfortunately, there's still a lot of money out there, but fortunately, it is there, and hopefully we'll have more families applying for that money. I think it's a great idea to amend that RSO because it, as you mentioned, there is a lot of loopholes and there is a lot of landlords adding fees that were not originally there. And I want to commend Robert. I know he saved some tenants from being evicted, just being days from being evicted because they didn't know about the program. Luckily, that, it wasn't a lot of time for Robert, but he was able to get to the court and save him from being evicted. So if we can include on that card to not hesitate to call the city, the sooner we know about it, the sooner they can receive the help and hopefully not fail that deadline and so that we can get them, help them from not being evicted. Again, thank you for all the work that you've done. Maybe that card can be like half a sheet. Do you have an idea when it's going out?
Sometime during December, roughly, I'm sorry, September, September. But I, I don't, I, I think it's going to grow into something better than a, just a postcard. Of course, the cost is going to go up, but, but I'm thinking of a fold, a folded flyer of some type.
So the sooner we can do that, because the deadline is around the corner and we can, I know we've been advertising it on the website and so forth, but if we can get that mailer out and something in bold letters so it can stand out, assistance or something, so we can get more people to apply for that money that's out there. Again, thank you, Carol, thank you, Ben, thank you, Robert, for all the work you're doing.
Yeah, so thank you. Well, Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you very much, Ben, for, for that, for that update. You know, coming off the heels of Councilmember Garcia in regards to our American Rescue Funds, we do have a line item in there, and my concern is, you know, the state program, as we've already seen, they have, you know, they've only had a little less than a billion, little less than $1 billion that's gone through there. It tells me that there's two things. One is very few, very few people know about it, which I don't believe that is the case, but, or what's more the reality is the difficulties and the paperwork that they're doing out. So when, when you look at their program and all the requirements that, that, that they're asking for, let's make sure that when we look at our internal program, because there might be an opportunity, we do have a set aside some funds in our recovery funds, that we try to make it as easy as possible for our renters, because that will certainly be able to help us, you know, move towards that. And then, you know, if there's a way of understanding, you know, how many folks perhaps in our, in our area are behind on their rent? I don't know if there's a data set from the state or somewhere else that might have that. I know I saw something quite some time ago, and it was about 16% of people in LA County were behind on their rent, you know, three, three months or more. So those are the other things too, is, you know, when they look at, I think at the county, at the state level, you have to be at least 60 months, you know, 60 days past due. If you could just kind of clarify that, and that might be something different than, you know, when we look at it from our perspective, it's, you know, maybe it's 45 days past due or whatever the case may be, as it relates to, you know, job loss, job hour loss, sickness of COVID and/or taking care of someone as a result of COVID. So if we could look at that, that would be certainly helpful. The one other thing too is just, as a public notice, is, you know, there are folks in our, in our state and here in our community that are, you know, also past due on their water bills and also on their electricity bills. There's close to about $2 billion, $2 billion worth of outstanding payments on water and electricity. And there is a bill that's also going to be coming through, a new program that's going to be coming through on the water side, which I believe, you know, luckily our, our folks from the Valley County Water District are fully ahead of that, looking to, you know, support that. So that's something that, you know, people could be aware of. So when, once that becomes available, if you can please work with our colleagues across the street over there on that part, and also the, the folks through the, with our electrical side, so we can help, you know, those folks mitigate some of their past due bills, you know, because again, once we have that information, that'll be helpful because similar to, at least on the water side program, they're looking between March of last year and June of this year. And it's got to be, you know, six, a minimum of 60 days. So that's why I say is, you know, we just be mindful of that as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Of course, thank you to staff for working diligently on this, and our city attorney for having some good results on this, and we look forward to continued progress on this. And I believe at this point, we are moving to public communications. If there's anybody looking to speak, city clerk, did you get?
Mayor.
Start off with the.
Yes, we do have some individuals who have asked that we call them. So we're going to start with Kiana Martinez, and she is going to speak on item number eight.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, real, real quick, before we make the phone call?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Sorry about that. In regards to the last item for discussion, if staff and Ben, can you look at, also looking at a program where we perhaps partner with some of our outside organizations such as utilizing Promatodas that could help us with systematic targeted outreach to some of the key apartment buildings that are having these challenges? You know, that's something that we can certainly fund, you know, and that's something to help echo and also leverage your staff, Ben, but also use folks that are already in the community doing some of the work currently. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. City clerk?
Okay, Kiana, go ahead.
Hello, City Council. I'd like to start off really quickly with commenting on the presentation I was just given. I agree with the folks at the City Development Director with amendments on the ordinance. It's very important, as I work with tenants at the Housing Rights Center, knowing about these different issues that are coming up. And I think something to be added is something for harassment. So the City of Los Angeles just passed the anti-harassment ordinance, and I think we can look to that as to find that we can put in place that are higher for all residents, not just rent-controlled residents. And also, I think for people who call in from the city to the development director there, another good thing would be to prioritize emergency situations. I don't know if any of the city council members have ever experienced it, but there's been calls that I've gotten where tenants have not had access to the air conditioner, washer and dryer, utilities, or hot and cold water. It could be multiple days, and even one or two days without those things could deeply affect tenants' health. So I think that that should be a consideration to add into what should be prioritized. And the most important thing right now is legal, legal representation, because without legal representation, it's very hard for tenants to win their cases. It's something like 90% of tenants who have legal representation win their cases in evictions and other things. And all the information about the rental, California rental assistance program could be found at housingiskies.com. And if people need help with, if they have a disability or technological limits, you can call the Appointment Center at 833-687-0967. So there's also information on that if y'all ever want to reach out for me with that. And now, as a member of People United of Baldwin Park, I'd like to make a comment on Agenda Item Number Eight. And so our concern there is that the American Rescue Plan Funds should be to uplift the residents in our city out of the unprecedented economic and health crisis we're enduring. And so we think it's gravely unethical to use funds on police cards rather than for community needs during a crisis. And so if the police feel that they need these upgrades that are not necessities, I think they should use the funds they do have, especially seeing that they have the highest police budget in the San Gabriel Valley and the highest budget than, I'm pretty sure, almost all of the city departments. And so we want to invest in programs like this, in programs like Agenda Item Number, I think it's one or two, or the.
Hi, Kiana, sorry, your time is up.
And Ben, that is a, a very good idea. Let's look into a, a report on the anti-harassment side of it.
Next person is Christina Cardenas.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and community. My name is Christina Cardenas. I'm a senior project manager for LAC USC Medical Center Foundation, and I'm joined here by coalition members from the Breathe Free Baldwin Park Coalition, working locally as part of the Tobacco Control and Prevention Program managed by the Los Angeles Department of Public Health, focused on educating and informing communities across California on the consequences of youth vaping and creating healthy environments to reduce youth access to flavored tobacco. We are here tonight to be a source, a resource with regards to item number 11, a proposed ordinance preventing the sale of flavored tobacco. And we would be available for any questions regarding any community-based efforts and concerns about vaping that has been deemed an epidemic by the U.S. Surgeon General. Our experiences have allowed us to connect with leading experts across the state, some of which are here this evening, to learn from best practices and model ordinances to address flavored tobacco, and we look forward to sharing some of those best practices. In a 2020 National Youth Tobacco Survey, it was found that 38.9% of current high school students are using e-cigarettes, and 22.5 of those students use e-cigarettes daily. It's also been found that more than half of all youth and young adults who vape or use tobacco on, in California, attempted to quit within the last 12 months. They have IDed barriers to quitting to the readily accessible flavored tobacco in brick and mortar stores. We have this evening provided letters of support and petition signatures from the community. We have youth that, given COVID, were not able to attend this evening, but have provided written statements, and they actually prepared a photo voice packet for you to share their experience and their concerns about vaping in Baldwin Park. We would like to continue this conversation, and we are here to educate and inform the community, and very interested in creating long-term and short-term solutions to reduce youth access to flavored tobacco, reduce exposure to secondhand smoke, and increase access to mental health and smoking cessation resources. We're so thankful for your time this evening. We're so thankful to staff, and we've been really thankful to coordinate resources from the Department of Public Health as well, as well as Public Health Law Center with staff in preparation for the staff report and the proposed ordinance. Thank you so much for your time, and we look forward to this continued partnership. Thank you.
Next is Yolanda Martinez.
Buenas noches, honorable alcalde, Estrada, and miembros del consilio.
Señora Martinez, un momento, por favor. Vamos a conseguir el intérprete?
Okay.
Denos un momento.
The interpreter is ready, Yolanda.
Siga.
Mi nombre es Yolanda Martinez. Tengo 15 años viviendo en esta comunidad. Soy miembro de la coalición Respirar Libre, madre de familia.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Yolanda Martinez, and I am a member of the Respirar Libremente, la coalición Respirar, I'm sorry, the coalition Respirar Libremente. Adelante.
Como residente de esta ciudad y madre, estoy preocupada por el bienestar de mis hijos, por todos los jóvenes de nuestra comunidad.
As a resident and parent of the city, and, I'm sorry, as a resident of the city and parent, I am concerned of the well-being of, of the young in the city. Adelante.
No me gustaría que mis hijos y otros jóvenes cayeran a la tentación y manipulación del cigarrillo electrónico.
I wouldn't like my children or older youth to fall victims to the manipulations or marketing of vaping.
Cuando mi hijo estaba en el séptimo grado, tuvimos varios talleres que nos ofrecieron a los padres sobre lo, sobre lo que realmente contiene el cigarrillo electrónico y sus consecuencias al consumirlo.
Eh. We, uh, we had a few, eh, we had a few, eh, trainings or workshops around, uh, vaping, e-cigarettes, and the ingredients that are included in this and the consequences of vaping.
Al ver videos y al escuchar realmente de qué están hechos estos cigarrillos transformados con aroma de sabores, nos quedamos congelados al saber las consecuencias que estos causan en el organismo al consumirlos.
After watching several videos and learning about the ingredients that are, uh, in, in the cigarettes, we were stunned by the effects of these, uh, in, you know, in the consumers' bodies.
También como miembro de la coalición Respirar Libre, hemos podido presentar talleres al distrito escolar, lo cual estamos sumamente agradecidas.
Also, as a member of, uh, the Coalition Respirar Libre, we have been able to provide some workshops. And we're very thankful about that.
Como madre, me preocupa el daño físico a causa del vapeo. Sabían que el vapeo se, se ha convertido en una epidemia en todo nuestro estado y país?
As a parent, I am very concerned about, uh, the effects of vaping. Do you know, are you aware that, uh, vaping has become a pandemic, uh, in all our states and country?
El uso al cigarrillo electrónico ha ido creciendo en gran cantidad en estudiantes de preparatoria y a consecuencia del vapeo en los jóvenes. Tienen serias enfermedades como daño en los pulmones.
Um, the use of, uh, electric, uh, electronic cigarettes have increased amongst high school, uh, students. And it has created serial, uh, serious illness, uh, such as problems in the lungs.
Un estudio, un estudio reciente demostró que estas enfermedades en los pulmones son asociadas al químico encontrado en productos de vapeo.
Um, a recent study found that these chemicals in e-cigarettes, um, uh, rather, that these are associated to the chemicals found in e-cigarettes.
Adicionalmente, el vapeo eleva el ritmo cardíaco, altera la presión. Están más, están más expuestos a sufrir un ataque al corazón, otras enfermedades incluyendo asma, bronquitis, y otras severas infecciones.
Vaping. Uh. Vaping can cause, uh, heart attack, asthma, bronchitis, and other, uh, severe infections.
Como madre, quiero lo mejor para mis hijos, priorizando su salud y bienestar ante todo.
As a mother, I want the best for my children, prioritizing their health, uh, above everything.
Para que así puedan disfrutar de la oportunidad, las oportunidades positivas que la vida nos ofrece.
So that they can take advantage of the positive opportunities in life.
Como padre, necesitamos ser realistas y saber que los peligros existen realmente.
As parents, we need to be realistic and aware that, uh, there are dangers out there.
Como adultos, ignoramos muchas cosas al respecto. Es por eso que estoy preocupada por lo mismo.
As adults, we ignore so many things around this issue. This is why I'm very concerned about it.
Estoy en gran favor del artículo 11 de la agenda de hoy y apoyo una póliza progresiva que prohíba la venta de productos de tabaco con sabor ya que hace daño a nuestros jóvenes de nuestra comunidad.
Uh, I am, uh, in favor of, uh, uh, item 11 to prohibit, uh, the sale of, uh, tobacco, eh, eh, products.
Gracias por tomar.
Thank you for your consideration.
Sachi Laescalante, she will also need an interpreter.
The interpreter is ready.
Buenas noches, señor alcalde y miembros del consilio. Mi nombre es Sachi Laescalante. Soy residente de esa ciudad por más de 28 años y miembro de la coalición Respirar Libre Baldwin Park. Soy promotora de salud.
Good evening, uh, mayor. Good evening to the rest of the members. Uh, my name is Sachi Laescalante, and I am also a member of the Coalition Respirar Libremente. And I've been a resident of Baldwin Park for, uh, 28 years.
Adelante.
Actualmente soy promotora de salud para el bienestar de nuestra comunidad. Como miembro de esta comunidad, estoy, eh, mi preocupación en estos momentos es el consumo de tabaco con sabor y el vapeo, ya que estos, eh, son nocivos para la salud, tanto para los jóvenes como para los de mayor edad. Y creo que la prevención es uno de los factores que pudiera influir para poder reducir o disminuir el uso de estos productos. Que tanto, tanta tentación tiene a nuestros jóvenes, lo atractivo que es para ellos, sobre todo las presentaciones en las que se dan en las tiendas.
Uh, un momento, un momento, por favor. Eh, I am a, uh, health promoter in my community. I am also, eh, eh, very concerned about, uh, vaping and the sale of these, uh, these, uh, products. I am highly concerned about the way that they are marketed. And I believe that prevention is key to reducing the consumption of this. And the way that these, uh, products are, eh, marketed is very tempted for the youth.
Adelante.
Prevenir mediante programas y campañas dirigidas a nuestros jóvenes y así ayudar a que el uso de estos productos de tabaco con sabor disminuya.
And, eh, uh, yeah, eh, I believe that prevention should be accomplished in the way of campaigns that target, uh, our young, and, and that way, uh, we can reduce the, uh, the, um, the use of this or, uh, consumption of this.
Adelante.
Además, eh, los residentes de esta ciudad apoyaron, eh, desde el año pasado, del abril de 2020, terminamos de hacer unas encuestas, eh, un 87% apoyaron la provisión de la venta de tabaco con sabor y vapeo en las tiendas de la ciudad. Y más de un 80%, eh, la prohibición de la venta de productos de tabaco con sabor también en las farmacias. Es por eso que, para concluir, les pido, eh, estoy en apoyo del artículo 11 y también les pido que preparen una póliza para prohibir la venta de tabaco con sabor en, en la ciudad. Muchas gracias por su atención.
Um. We have been, uh, through some surveys that we did, uh, we found out that the residents are in favor of prohibiting these, uh, products. A survey showed that 80%, 87%, I'm sorry, is in favor of banning the sale of this flavor, eh, tobacco, eh, I'm sorry, of, of, of this vaping, uh, e-cigarettes. And 80% are also, uh, uh, in favor of prohibiting the sale of flavored tobacco in pharmacies. This is why I am in support of, uh, item, agenda item number 11. And, uh, I asked that you, uh, ban the sale of these, uh, products. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Quiroz.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council members. My name is Christina Quiroz. I work with the Los Angeles County Office of Education, Community Schools Initiative at Baldwin Park High School. My work at Baldwin Park High School began in the 2019-20 school year, and throughout my time there, I've had the opportunity to work with school administration to identify priorities that could address barriers to learning for students, such as increasing family engagement, basic need support, and enrichment programs, to name a few. Student wellness is a key priority for our school community, and the current epidemic of youth vaping was at the forefront of concerns, ahem, for school admin, teachers, parents, and students. We want to ensure that our community is informed. Flavored tobacco has sho, has been shown to increase the likelihood that someone, especially children, will try tobacco products and remain longtime users. These products mask the strong taste of tobacco, making smoking seem less harmful among youth and creates a misconception that vaping isn't as dangerous as tobacco because it tastes like bubble gum or cereal that they eat every day. A recent study showed 21% of all high school students in the U.S. report using an e-cigarette product in the past 30 days. And 40% of students who vape reported using, using it because it tastes good. It's research like this that encouraged Baldwin Park High School to apply for and receive a grant from LACO's Tobacco Use and Prevention Education Program, also known as TUPE. This, um, prevention program is designed to support the school and community in addressing the current epidemic of youth vaping and tobacco use. In collaboration with the Wellness Center LA team, and through this grant, we provided presentations to our academic counselors, students, teachers, and parents. Each group was provided facts on science behind vaping and what effects it has on adolescent body. We wanted to support parents in recognizing devices commonly used to vape and common behaviors if youth is using substances. Lastly, strategies and resources were provided to support parents in preventing or supporting youth overcome vaping addiction. But the work is far from done. We need support from members like you to push for banning of flavored tobacco products in the community as we continue to inform our students and parents on negative effects of vaping and tobacco use. Thank you.
Thank you. Primo Castro.
Buenas noches, members of the city council, mayor. My name is Primo Castro, Government Relations Director for the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network, the largest, uh, cancer organization in the U.S., uh, nationwide as well. Uh, you know, here in support of item 11, you know, on the agenda, obviously, uh, you know, we all have, we know, we've all been touched by cancer when we were the other. We're actually one degree away from cancer. And, uh, you know, obviously, the biggest thing for, uh, for, you know, for tonight's agenda is knowing that, you know, we all know that smoking, you know, causes 13 types of cancer. So, just, you know, just, like, promoting these health policies from city to city, whether here in the San Gabe Valley, the West Side, in the South Bay, throughout California, you know, we see, we see the impact. We see what's, you know, what is, uh, you know, what these policies really mean for communities that are trying to prevent long-lasting effects, economic impacts to, you know, to families that suffer from, uh, from, you know, from tobacco use, uh, you know, because as a result of cancer. So here in support of this flavor policy, uh, comprehensive policy. And, you know, just know that we, you know, we just don't, uh, you know, we don't want to see any exemptions for any flavor pol, you know, for any flavor product. Uh, we want to make sure that flavored shisha is included in their cigars, et cetera. Um, you know, with over 15,000 flavor products in the market, um, especially a Latino, uh, you know, with, with a community such as, that has a big Latino community like Baldwin Park, we know that flavors such as Jamaica, Camarindo, you know, you name it, right? Uh, you know, these are popular, you know, these are popular flavors within Latino communities. So we ask that you please pass a strong comprehensive policy here in the city of Baldwin Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Grace Sierra.
Good evening, mayor Estrada and all council members of Baldwin Park. My name is Grace Sierra, and I've been a part of many causes in Baldwin Park over the years. Volunteering in my children's schools, a soccer mom, the JEM project, and dedicated myself advocating awareness of obesity in children and adults as lead promotora in the HIAC program through Citrus Valley Health Partners for the schools of Baldwin Park. I'm here tonight to inform you of the ugly epidemic affecting most vulnerable teens. They're being bombarded with vaping epidemic. This influence is overwhelming. It's gotten out of control and continues to grow, affecting the teens worldwide. It's a nightmare for parents to phantom their kids being consumers. With your help, we need to take the e-cigarettes and harmful addicting supplies off the market immediately by changing the policies and regulations. The tobacco industry predatory marketing tactics continue to make money by minimizing the dangers. Money, money is their only concern, not the teens affected. You've probably seen their TV commercials or heard of them on the radio in Spanish and English, glamorizing the use of vaping around the friends, making it appealing and accepted with flavor and techie devices hidden from adults. These are real dangers, and that's the honest truth. That's why it's vital to address it now. Teens continue to vape harmful vapors of poison into their bodies. We need to stop the sale of products and underage kids also. We need enforcement to the retailers, licenses, taxes, and fines. Stop suppliers, cutting down on their many attractions, gadgets, colors, flavors, and substances. Most importantly, it's awareness. This is key. Long-term dangers related to their health, but infections, their lungs being compromised. Hard to breathe, and with the COVID-19, it could be fatal. Dental health is also a problem. Mental health affects their developing brains, emotions, memory, and long-term possible side effects of addiction, of not knowing what they vaped. It can also be a gateway to, it can, it could also be a gateway for other drugs and things. We can all make a huge difference in empowering the teens, starting a conversation, an intervention with city staff, parks and recreation center, um, church involvement, school administrators, staff, teachers, counselors, nurses, coaches, custodians, bus drivers, parents, family members, grandparents, and teens themselves. They need to know how much we care and love them enough to spare generation from the grips of the tobacco industry. As a grandma, I worry for their future. This is why I strongly support item 11 of tonight's agenda.
Thank you.
On behalf of Breathe Free Baldwin Park.
Your time is up, sorry.
Thank you, and God bless you.
Catherine Lozier.
Good evening, honorable mayor, mayor, council members, community partners, and fellow community members. It's a pleasure tonight to share that the LA County Library is now fine-free. There will no longer be charges for overdue materials, and that includes all past, present, and future charges. We will still have fees for lost and overdue materials, but any cardholder who's 21 or, or younger, excuse me, 20 or younger, can reduce or remove those fees through our Great Readaway Program. For every one hour of reading, they can reduce their charges by $5, um, with the goal to have them fine-free. And that can be, um, they can sign up for the Great Readaway both in person and online. And then, uh, switching gears slightly, uh, CORE, which stands for Community Organized Relief Effort, will be returning to the Baldwin Park Library on Fridays to offer free COVID testing. That will be starting this Friday, September 3rd, and will continue through September 24th. Um, no reservations or appointments are necessary. You can come to the library. It'll be right out in front. And, um, you can give us a call at 626-962-6947. You can look on the LA County website for COVID testing locations. Or feel free to stop in and ask. We're always here to help. Thank you so much.
Catherine, can you make sure you share that information with our, with our staff so then we can also put it on our marquees and, and make sure everybody's aware?
Absolutely. Just trying to get approval for the graphics they provided, and when I get that, I will send that over to you, sir. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, real quick.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, real quick. Catherine? Just, I know you guys provide some great resources for free, especially, you know, like L.A. Times and like that, and so forth, digital. Just as consideration, excuse me, for the New York Times. For consideration, can you also just circle back with management and see if the San Gabriel Tribune and/or the Los Angeles Time can be made available through your digital platforms that you have, so our residents, and even La Pion, that be able to access those for free? I know it's in the same manner that you have the New York Times available. That'd be much appreciated.
Yes, absolutely. The Los Angeles Time is available through Press Reader, but I will, I will reach out for La Pion and the other, the other journals you mentioned. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, and for the record, we also received in writing emails in support of item 11 from William Shi, Alicia Escalante, Primo Castro, and Eddie Martinez. Those are all the written requests we have received.
Great. At this point, anybody who didn't fill out that postcard, if they're looking to speak, you can make your way to the microphone.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and staff that are here, and also the audience. I am your new acting assistant chief, representing the Los Angeles County Fire Department, your fire department. I represent all the first responders, all the firefighters that worked in day and night to protect your city. So I'm here to serve you and whatever questions you have. I work closely with the CEO and also the police chief on a daily basis. They probably know me from text and phone call, but never in person, so I came here tonight to see them and meet, have you meet all of you. So have a good evening. Thank you. A pleasure.
What's your name?
Flores. Carl Flores.
Thank you, and welcome. Welcome.
Just thank you. Nice to meet you.
Hello, City Council, residents of Baldwin Park. We need to clean the city up. I know, we have a lot of complaints, but we don't seem to get very much done. When you go over the Athol Bridge, if you look down to your left going south, you guys clean, you ask the proprietor, the renter, or whoever he was, you rent, hey, you gotta clean this place up. Well, it still looks like a dump. People that come to Kaiser or come to Baldwin Park to look for a home or whatever, they get to see that. They say, oh, my God, they really take good care of this city. It's on Garvey. There are two buildings there. They look like a dump. You people always say, let's beautify Baldwin Park. Well, you're not doing too good of a job. People throw their mattresses across the street from Frazier, I mean, from Kaiser. The people that live in that apartments, they put their couch out there, they put their mattresses out there. And I know they say they don't do it. Well, I've never seen anybody do it, but I know they do it because before trash day, it's all there. So I think you people need to do a lot more job. And let me ask you, how many times have you people traveled through our city? You know, this is not fair. We're separated, but you people aren't. That looks pretty nice, huh? You aren't separated, and neither are you. I'll wear this because I want to get protected like you do. But next time you separate us, you people get separated also. Now, you're trying to tell us, well, we gotta look at the computer. We gotta do this. Hey, you can stand behind it one at a time, walk up and do your thing, and then get out. But it's easier to separate us because we're, we're the audience. Let me get back to the cleaning up your city. I live in Baldwin Park, and you people are doing a very poor job. I'm gonna repeat it again because you need to be told. When's the last time you people took a trip around Baldwin Park, the whole city? Take the lawyer with you because you're gonna need him. Why can't you people help us? Why, we complained to this department, that department, that one, that one, and you people just look at us. Why can't you help us? You can raise our taxes because they're, you people are gonna look for it again.
Sorry, your time is up.
But you can't clean the city.
Sorry, your time is up, Ms. ...
Why not?
Sorry, Mr. Luna, your time is up.
Think about it.
Buenas tardes, City Council. My name is Beatriz Sandoval. I'm a community organizer with L.A. Voice and leader in San John the Baptist, and also a part of the Coalition of Breath Free, who entirely we support this coalition, this policy as tremendous benefit for our community. Like, I want to talk to about the housing, rent and civilization ordinance we have set up like December 2019. So we have enough time. Also, we have a lot of job to, to set up that policy in our, in our community. You remember, City Council, Paul Hernandez, Alejandro Avila, and you as community mayor. The whole means we have to come with this dream protection for our, our community, tenants' community. So we, we did a lot of job and great job because we, we have success in that part of the plan too. But we need, I'd like to ask to Benjamin how we can be partnered. He asking for partners when his presentation. But I think so the first part is the staff had the knowledge about the policy. I know by the landlords and the tenants, they complain because they receive grown information about the policy. One of the landlords, they don't receive information about the moratorium. So I don't want to blame any, because this is not personal. This is a part of that job as team. We are one community, and we are together in this. So I'd like to invite you by, I invited already by email to, to Ben, to meeting with L.A. Voice team and San John the Baptist community, and other tenants to, to come together and do this job. So I also ask you to sign the letter. I sent you homely, I asked you to sign the letter for immigration reform. Please do that. This is very important for undocumented immigration, immigrants, brothers and sisters, and for their families. They already here, we already here, we stay here. So be part of this campaign, please. And, and also, I'd like to say thank you because the Breath Free, no, it started last year, or two years, they started with the council member Garcia. She set up the, the ban on the smoke in the apartments and public space. So we are here, and we need to do, stay together and do the job we need to do.
Thank you. Your time is up, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members and staff. Mario Maciel, planning commissioner. Just wanted to extend my support for also for item number 11, something that weighs deeply on my heart only because my family, my oldest son, has fallen victim of vaping products. I've been to numerous amounts of clinics that have been held by the Baldwin Park Breath Free Coalition and made myself aware of everything that's out there. And it's amazing just to see how much of these products are being directed to our kids by making them the size of, making them the sizes and making them look like pens, making them look like USB drives, making them look like something that parents won't think twice to see, oh, it's just a, it's just a flash drive. But in reality, it's a vape pen for these kids. And these clinics that I went to, there were other parents there that had video of our very own Baldwin Park High School, where kids are walking by, and police officers are there within 15 feet, doing nothing as they're blowing out clouds from these vape pens. I did further research as to the pen that my son had and found out that it wasn't just a regular vape pen. Even though it had cartoon characters on the side, his vape pen had CBD product in it, which, upon doing even further research, makes it even worse that our city is not actually out there enforcing and making sure that these people that are out there selling these products are not selling them to minors. Because a statistic shows by a test that they did that everybody, almost everybody failed upon selling to minors. And that is eye-opening to me. So I just want to extend my support and say, I hope this ordinance that you guys are putting together meets the criteria that would help eliminate the youth among teenagers. I had to really express to my son the consequences of this. The disease that comes from it is known to be irreversible. As far as I know, there is no cure for it once it becomes a pulmonary disease. Something needs to be done, and I'm in full support. Thank you, guys.
Is there anybody else looking to speak? If not, at this moment, I will close public communication. And I believe at this point, moment, we will move over to our consent calendar. If there's any items council is looking to pull.
Mayor?
Yes, council member?
Thank you. Before we do that, I just want to thank those who came out to speak with regard to the flavored tobacco item. And I recognize many of you have been involved with the city for more than a decade, and so it's nice to see and hear all of you who are present on this item. So thank you for your continued activism and advocacy. And I also want to welcome our new acting assistant chief, Flores. Welcome to our community. We look forward to building a relationship with you. We have a wonderful relationship with our station 29. And so we, we look forward to working with you. We were very proud of your predecessor, Jim Enriquez, who was also a son and product of Baldwin Park. So we just, we welcome you and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, real time.
I also want to thank everybody that came to speak about item number 11. I am with you, working with the school district. I have come in contact with students that, that started smoking at a very young age. And these vape products are not, is not helping the situation. It's making it more enticing for them. So I appreciate you coming out and speaking out, just seeing all the work that your department is using and are doing for us and working with our community. Thank you so much. Welcome, Chief, to the city of Baldwin Park. We look forward to working with you. Hopefully, I'll stop by the station one of these days and meet you face to face. I also want to remind the community that this Saturday, there's a COVID-19 vaccine site at the Estros 90 Community Center. At the city of Baldwin Park, in collaboration with the office of Senator Susan Rubio and Proyecto del Barrio, will be at Morgan Park Saturday the 4th from 10 to 3. So if you are in need of your vaccination or you know anybody that still needs a vaccination, please be sure to share that information. I'm not sure we have it on our website, Manny. We do, right? We do. So I just want to remind everybody. Thank you.
Councilmember Hernandez, comment?
Uh, no.
Oh, okay, sorry. Okay. So if there's any items we are looking to pull? Yes, item number four, please. Okay. Any other items? There's just one. Okay, so we'll pull item number four, and then I will make a motion to pass items 1 through 8, except number four. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? If not, motion passes. And Councilmember Hernandez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just pulled this item just so, again, we can perhaps, Sam could just kind of give us a brief overview in regards to what this great project's gonna do for our city, not only on the water recycling part, but also on the city facilities and services that we're gonna do that. You know, if you could just kind of give a quick overview in regards to, you know, once we're done with the infrastructure part, perhaps either you or maybe Manny could speak to the actual enhanced services that the community will be able to benefit from this. You want to start, Sam? What's underneath the ground first?
Absolutely, yeah, no. No, thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Yeah, so this is, this is one of the biggest projects that, you know, the city has, will be undertaking. And it involves a large water quality component, which is to install large storage chambers underneath the park. These are for stormwater storage and infiltration to recharge our water table. The project's expected to go for about six to eight months for that park. Once all of that is installed and ready to go, the, the, the plan is to redo the park because it's going to be disrupted completely. So, yeah, so we have planned a couple of things. We have the, the dog park, some soccer fields, basketball courts. We have an expansion for the parking lot and a restroom and other amenities. So, big project. We're very excited to get started. And I don't know if Manny has additional information.
Thank you, Sam. Sam pretty much covered it excluding one item. We are going to have our first in our park system, universal playground. So what we mean by universal playground is that an individual in a wheelchair can go and maneuver themselves all around the playground. So I'm very happy to, to say that we will have a updated playground system. Thank you.
Thank you, you too. And that was the other big pieces. You know, this is, like you said, is one of our first, and hopefully, the rest of our parks, we can make them extremely accessible for our, you know, youth that we have that might need, that need ADA requirements. So this is a fantastic opportunity for that. The one thing I would ask is, you know, as you're working with, with the landscape artists, perhaps we could also identify areas in which we could remove the turf and actually, you know, remove actually greenage and use turf replacement. So that way, we don't have to consume as much water, you know, for those key areas, and just, you know, look at those type of options as we kind of go through the, the planning and design process. And I know that's something that, you know, our water director, Mr. Javier Vargas, director, is quite happy about, you know, the, the work that we're doing here. So this is gonna be a fantastic model. And the one other thing too is, you know, I think we mentioned this in the past, about maybe a year ago when we're looking at, is see if we can look in and around project labor agreements to see if there's a way to bring in some of our union partners for apprenticeship opportunities as it relates to some, maybe not all, but at least some of the work that has to be done through that process. Mr. Mayor, with that, I would ask that we adopt item four, as is.
Great. Motion? That was it? Second. Perfect. Any objections? Not? Item four passes. And I believe we are now at a public hearing. And this is for the public hearing regarding fiscal year 2021 dash 2021 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, also known as... CAPER. So at this moment, I will officially open the public hearing for those in favor. And if there's anyone looking to speak, now is the time in favor. If not, at this moment, I officially close the public hearing in favor, and I officially open the public hearing, uh, against the item. If anybody is looking to speak against the item, now is the time. Being that nobody is looking to speak on the item, I officially close, the public hearing against this item. I don't know if any, uh, council members have any questions or comments or concerns. I think this might pertain to you, correct, then?
Yes, Mr. Yes, Mr. Mayor, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Sure, can you just give us an overview of what, uh, the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report is?
I can ask, uh, Carol to, to, uh, step up to the mic and maybe provide more details, but I'll give you a, a brief, uh, introduction. This is an annual report, the CAPR, we call it. Um, it's, uh, always due at the end of September, and it is a, uh, annual performance, performance report on all the expenditures related, uh, to the Department of Housing and Urban Development that we've made in the past year for, for CDVG and home plans. This document is a statutory requirement, and as you can see, requires a public hearing, uh, publicly, public input, and then we, we have to submit it by September 28th to HUD.
Great, thank you. Uh, if there's no comment from our council, I will now make a motion to pass, officially pass item number nine regarding the fiscal year 2021 dash 2021 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Uh, can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? Not. That item number nine passes, and we move on to reports of officers, and we have our, um, capital improvement project, proposed budget. Uh, so Sam, and I've kind of asked you about, uh, adding some items, so. So, and I, I was also looking at our, um, I know that we preliminary approved our update to the, to the chambers. So seeing that we are trying to, um, create some safe spacing between our, our residents that want to come and attend the per, the meetings in person, I, I think it's the time to work on that item as we can also expand into having an outside area where people can view, a meeting and hear it in a safe manner. And I think that would also help with making sure that people who don't fit in the chambers are going to be able to watch it outside.
Uh, understood, uh, the way I understand it is that this is a, a project that you would like to add to the CIP.
Yeah, so I'm asking, should I, is that a project that's added to the CIP? Or is that a project that I should bring up after, uh, comments?
Right, uh, it, it would be after the comments. That project is not on the CIP at the moment.
Okay, good. Okay, and then for CIP, I know that there's a lot of, uh, traffic and safety, uh, improvements. So I did try to take a stroll around town at the latest hour of the night, and I tried to find the darkest streets that we have, and I know that many of the residents have shown concern regarding, uh, you know, dark streets. But of course, putting up light poles is very expensive. So I know that we've talked about, uh, potential flashing, um, lights like we have on Baldwin Park Boulevard to try to deter speeding and make sure that, you know, drivers are, are staying aware. So I did look at some of these, and I, would that be the time to add to CIP?
Yes, absolutely. We can, um, add those to the CIP with council action tonight.
Great, so I, um, so of course, I think one of the, the urgent items is, uh, uh, speed reducing on Baldwin Park Boulevard with, with, uh, reflecting devices or any other device that might be, uh, working there, and that's on the, that's at the curve before you hit Ramona.
Thank you.
And, um, oh, don't worry, I'm not done, but. So, but I'll, I'll keep it very brief. And then, of course, our major streets, so, um, like Olive, Olive, Los Angeles Street, and Ramona Boulevard. If we can find the, the sidewalks that would be key in those areas so that we can add those. And, and also our, our, uh, school crossings. So I think a lot of the school crossings are, are in pretty key areas where we can help mitigate that and hopefully keep our drivers aware at night.
Okay. So, um, uh, so Rose and I have been working on, on this budget, and typically we do a presentation, so I, I, I did provide, uh, I'm sorry, I did put together a couple of slides. I don't know if the council, uh, wants to, you know, go through the slides or if they've had enough time to review, uh, the projects. The listing is exhausting, there's a lot of projects on there. Uh, most of them are being funded by grant funds and, uh, special revenue. So I can walk the council through some of that information if you, uh, so desire.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a pretty long list. I think I have it in paper right here, actually. But I don't want you to read it all, but.
No.
But, um, you know, maybe you can highlight some of the, the key improvements that the city will be seeing this year or, uh, throughout this, uh, CIP. Mr. Mayor?
Mayor? Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, those are great suggestions. Uh, I'd also like to add for consideration, um, Sam, in regards to the sewer, um, you know, infrastructure and so forth, is that the responsibility of the county or for us to do?
Um, so it, 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 it depends. So, uh, mainline sewer is typically the, the county. Uh, we, if we are doing a sewer system that we're going to be on, then that would be, uh, that would be the city.
Um, and do we have, uh, an assessment in regards to the line, lineage and the age and so forth in and around our area, for our city?
Yes, uh, we do. Uh, we do have an assessment, it's kind of old. We do have a, uh, update to that in the CIP.
And is that worth a study of adding, um, some funding for that to redo the study and have a better assessment in regards to our current needs now than, you know, the last time that we did?
Absolutely. So we, um, we have it programmed for, for next year, but if the council desires, we can move it up to this year and, um, start, start that project. We would just need to identify, uh, funding for it.
Okay. My recommendation would be if we could help, I'd help Sam, uh, fast-forward some of that information. And what, how much money would that require?
So, um, for the study, we have it at eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand? So I would ask if we could, uh, fast-forward that, um, so we can, uh, help, uh, again, this is the infrastructure things that cost for us, and these are also things, as I see, is when we begin these projects, these are also jobs, uh, in our community that we could, uh, bring in and enhance, um, for our residents. Sorry, Sam.
Yeah, okay. And then we have a Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. So Sam, I, I welcome the presentation, and thank you for this memo and the briefing. But in addition to the overview, can you also just give us a, a very brief, um, summary of capital improvement plan and the process that we talked about a few months ago with regard to like the RF, the RFQs, the RFPs, first for the shortlist of engineers and then for the projects? Just to kind of walk through that process? Because this is the, kind of the initial review and approval of that process, right?
Right.
So I would just say if you could touch on that, um, at some point in your presentation, just briefly, that would be helpful.
Absolutely. Edit up? Okay, so, um, I did prepare some notes, and, uh, we're having some technical difficulty with the presentation, so. Let me just, um, or like this. So, um, so yeah, so the, the CIP synchronizes, uh, the capital and operation budgets by moving, uh, projects that were, you know, started last year, and moves them over to, uh, the current year, while also adding, um, new projects that, uh, the directors discussed. And we added it to the current year. So, um, to speak to what Councilmember, um, Garcia was saying is that, uh, this, this is just a plan. It's a planning tool that allows us to, uh, list all the individual projects, equipment purchases, and major studies that are planned for the next five years. It provides a working, a working blueprint for sustaining and improving the city's infrastructures. It coordinates strategic planning, financial capacity, and physical development. So it's part of, it, it's a two-part, uh, system. So the first part is the budget, the actual approved budget that, um, uh, approves the projects for the current year, and then outlays expenditures for projects for the next five years. So as compared to the previous year, uh, this year, uh, we have an increase of seven point seven, uh, million dollars over, uh, year over year. Uh, this year's budget is comprised of a, a carryover amount of eleven point six million dollars as opposed, uh, to the budget last year. So these are projects that are existing and not completed, and were being carried over to, to this year. The new projects are largely funded by grant funds, special revenue funds, uh, such as Measure W, and we are including a few of the, um, RP, uh, uh, ARPA projects that were approved at the previous meeting. So here's, here's a breakdown, um, by the city, uh, department. Uh, the, um, administration department has a budget of one point, uh, five million. Uh, community development doesn't have any CIP projects. Uh, the police department is at one point five million. Public Works is at, uh, twenty-two million. So Public Works has, has the lion's share of the CIP. Uh, and Parks and Recreation has, uh, two million dollars program for this year. So i- if the council doesn't have any questions at this point, I can start going over some and highlight some of the projects. This is not the exhaustive list. Of course, that list is attached to the, to the staff report, but, you know, I did, I did highlight some of the projects that, uh, other departments are working on. For example, the administration department is looking into upgrading, uh, the city from, moving from an exchange server to the new Microsoft 365, uh, service. They're also looking into updating, uh, the phone system and upgrading that citywide. And, uh, they're going to be working on a, uh, website upgrade that includes a, a brand-new, uh, website. At the police department, they have a few projects here. Uh, they have the, um, body and vehicle cameras. They have upgrades to the emergency operations center. Uh, of course, we, we talked last week about the leasing program, uh, that, that has some patrol and detective and admin, uh, vehicles coming to them. And they're replacing their obsolete tasers among the other projects you see there. Public Works, uh, we were just talking about, um, signals earlier, so we have a traffic signal at Olive and Main Avenue. Uh, we are working on a, uh, a piece of land that we just obtained from Caltrans, uh, is typically referred to as roadside park. Uh, we're looking into developing it into a, a nice park. Uh, also, a long time in development, we have, uh, the Pacific Avenue rail crossing improvements. This is our first, uh, quad zone, uh, related project. Big Dalton Wash Greenway. This is a, uh, sort of like connecting the, um, bike path that we're working on along the San Gabriel and Ramona, sorry, the, the San Gabriel River and the Walnut Creek Wash. Uh, this, this is a connection that goes along the Big Dalton Wash. Uh, and it continues the, the bike path along there. We talked earlier about our Barnes Park Regional Project. This is our stormwater project that's going to be bringing a lot of, uh, water quality benefits to the city. And, uh, so we also have the Public Works Maintenance Yard feasibility study that was approved last, last week, among, again, among others. Uh, Parks and Recreation has, uh, the, uh, they, they have the installation of new shade sales at Morgan and Hilldysalees Park. They are looking to replace the flooring at the teen center, uh, and they are, uh, replacing the senior center patio fountain as well as, uh, replacing the boxing ring and equipment at the community center. So these are just, um, a few of the projects that, uh, are listed in the, uh, exhaustive list that we attach to the staff report. Just, just to highlight a few. All of the directors are here to speak to their, their particular, uh, list of projects if the council has any questions.
Yeah, Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, um, Chief. Perhaps you can just share with us exactly, uh, what the upgrade to the Spillman, uh, module will do for you, uh, and your, and your, uh, department. Excellent. And if you could just speak to not only, uh, the benefit that you, that you as a department will have, but also that the city will be able to gain from that.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, thank you, council, thank you, Chief. Um, we're talking about the Spillman, um, RIPA and NIBARS modules. NIBARS is the, um, it's, it's replacing the reporting system to the FBI for crime stats. RIPA is the state-level, uh, racial identity profiling act, which will track, um, officers' perceptions of people that they stop. It'll track what the officer views that person in terms of their ethnicity, in terms of their, um, sexual orientation, identity, um, and other factors like that that will then be reported to the California Department of Justice.
Thank you, I just want to make sure, uh, people understood, you know, what that did not only for your department, uh, when it comes for transparency and accountability, but also for, uh, some comfort level of, you know, tracking, uh, that type of information for, for our residents, um, and folks that are being stopped. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. If there's no more comments from council, I believe we can, um.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you. Sam, um, thank you for touching on the process a little bit. But Ken, just for transparency of process, since it was something that we've discussed in the past. Uh, and, you know, it was, it was mentioned a few times in the past, and then there was a, a bit of a change in process. Can you just touch on capital improvement program? You know, this is a first review of these projects, and then what the process looks like moving forward as these projects are funded and, and implemented, executed on. Can you just touch on the process of that for transparency?
A- absolutely, thank you. That is, that is a, a great question. So, uh, the approval tonight is for the current fiscal year, uh, the 21, 22 year, which will carry over the projects from last year. Uh, the new projects that are added to the CIP in this year's, um, proposed, uh, list will, um, uh, come back to the council, uh, in an individual basis as they are developed. So, uh, this is a planning tool. It, it approves the funding and allows the finance department to create the account numbers so that we can start working and commence work on those projects. So once we have, for example, uh, a project that we need to move forward on in terms of whether we're going to go out for design services or construction or purchase, before we make that move, we would bring it to the council in a staff report for appropriation and approval.
Okay, thank you.
Great, so at this moment, um, five-year, I'll, uh, make a motion to approve the five-year, uh, proposed city plan. That's item number 10, can I get a second?
With the additions as proposed, correct?
Yes, with the proposed additions.
Second.
Any objections? No, if item, if not, then item 10 passes, and we moved on to item number 11, and that is the proposed ordinance prohibiting the sale of flavored tobacco products. I don't know if, uh, uh, city attorney, you want to start us off on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. A- as the, the council directed, we have drafted a very
A- as the, the council directed, we have drafted a very comprehensive ordinance banning literally every flavor. So as many of the people spoke about, there's a myriad of different flavors that you could list forever and ever, but our ordinance has language which essentially bans everything that is not tobacco-flavored. So any other flavor than that is going to be banned. It's a very comprehensive ordinance banning every flavor. Want to make that very clear. I have been working at the direction of council with our other partners, Mrs. Cardenas from the Wellness Center and the Public Health Law Center. Mr. Long is a staff attorney there. We've taken suggestions from them. They provided an extraordinary amount of information that we've been able to incorporate into our ordinance to make it even stronger. The only reason that I brought this back today is because there are some items that I've been discussing with our partners and our friends that really are not directed towards the banning of the flavors, but more towards tobacco and adults per se. And I wasn't clear about whether or not we, the council wanted to include that in this ordinance banning flavored tobacco, because that really is, as all of the people have mentioned, that is geared towards minors and that's something that's, you know, very important to everyone. These other items I'm going to mention to you are more geared towards adult and tobacco use, and we may want to tackle that in a different forum at a different time. And so I just wanted to make sure that was the council's direction before we brought this for final, or for first reading, excuse me. Some of the things that I wanted to talk about are like locations of where we would possibly, the city would bar tobacco products. Bars, pharmacies, things of that nature, but again geared towards adults, right? Because an adult's only gonna be in a bar, another place of that nature. Also wanted to seek direction about whether we wanted to bar the total number of tobacco retailers in the city. Again, that's geared towards sort of the adult market because the adults have to buy tobaccos, or whether we wanted to look at the distance between retailers and things of that nature. Again, I think the ordinance banning the flavors is geared towards the, the children and, and I know that was a very big priority for the council and for those that are here tonight. And so we may want to tackle these other issues in a different forum and with a different ordinance, but I did want to give the council that opportunity because I hadn't had a chance to talk with all of you about those particular items. So that was, that's why I brought this forward sort of as a, a report of officers of Mayor. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I think, I think those are, those are another, I think those are also interesting points to bring up and, you know, the fight against tobacco, but I think those are items that we might want to spend some time on and we don't want to delay this ordinance. So having separate ordinance, ordinances for each one, I think is, is a lot better and it makes things more clear. So if, and then I, I'll open the floor to our council members if anybody has any comments on item number 11. Yes, Mayor Protem?
I just want to say that I'm very excited about this proposed ordinance. Like I said, I, I do work for the school district and I know the danger, I know the danger the flavored tobacco, well, any type of tobacco poses for, for our students. And like I said, it is very enticing to them. Just like the commercials put it out there and it's ridiculous how they entice our youth to taste this and, and just to get addicted to it. It creates a lot of behavior problems, learning disabilities. There's just a long list, as Christina knows, of problems that creates for our students. So I'm very much in favor of this ordinance because we need to protect our youth as much as possible. I know the, the points Robert made, you're right, those are for adults and we do need to consider and focus on the, on the children, on the youth, to make sure that they are being protected and maybe in the future work on, on the rest of that. But I just wanted to say thank you and I'm very much in favor of it.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I echo everyone's, you know, comments so far. Robert, those three items or those few items that you brought up, I appreciate that. I think those are items that we can certainly have a discussion at a later time. I know this is something that folks in the, you know, audience and our partners with Christina and others from the county and from the legal side have, you know, have proposed, but I think currently, you know, the ordinance that's in front of us speaks to a couple of things. One is, you know, I've had the opportunity to be working with Christina and the Coalition for, God, it seems like almost, almost 12 months now. And this ordinance is essentially, as I'll call it, has been driven by the community and more importantly, by the youth of our community because it was their work and their effort that really did the initial investigation, you know, working with the Wellness Center and some of our other partners to bring this item forward and to bring it to all of our attention. And as a result of that, we have a very, very stringent, very strict ordinance that I certainly believe 100% that this will protect our youth moving forward. You know, I know that we've provided some opportunities for the businesses to make them aware of what we were doing. So I appreciate that with our, you know, not only our city attorney and our, and our general manager, because we wanted to make sure that, you know, we weren't catching them blindsided. So we at least, you know, did our due diligence of working with them and making them aware of, you know, what we were attempting to do. But again, I certainly want to thank the youth that are not here, but I know they're, they're listening today. You know, you have been a driving effort and the driving force behind this ordinance. So I applaud you for, for all of, everything that you've done and being involved in this. And I hope that this encourage you, encourages you to be more involved in future issues because again, this is solving a problem in our community that, you know, I'll be very safe to say that necess, wasn't something that we brought up on our own, but it was being driven by our community and our folks and our partners. So again, thank you for everything that you've done. I think this will show other cities of what it can, can be. And I know for a fact that other folks are looking at, you know, how we did this so they could interpret and do something very similar to this in their own other cities in the San Gabriel and the southeast cities. So thank you very much. I certainly support this 100%. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Oh, yeah. Uh, City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do think that's a very important point that was made by Councilmember Hernandez. Ben and his shop sent out notices to every tobacco retailer in the city of Baldwin Park. He did that along with our CEO Enrique and they were, they were very adamant about that, that all our businesses get noticed before we came to something like this. So everybody's been notified and given a fair opportunity to be heard. And I think I have good direction. We'll bring it back for our first reading next week, uh, next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. So with that being said...
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you. Well, you know, our city historically has been very progressive when it comes to tobacco, starting with years ago when we implemented a ban on smoking in public spaces. And then a few years later, when we banned smoking in multifamily units because of asthma considerations. And then, and, and by the way, thank you Beatrice for, for mentioning those efforts. And then the consideration, the initial consideration when it came to flavored tobacco products and vaping. So it's only a natural next step that we would move forward with this stronger ordinance. And, you know, it has my full support. You know, we definitely do want to inform our, our youth and not enable the, this industry to take advantage of our youth with their, you know, flavored and candied products. So with that, I definitely support and I again want to thank all the activists, many of which have been part of these efforts for over a decade. And then some, some newcomers because the item is important in our community. So I want to say thank you. And then I want to thank also Councilmember Hernandez for working closely with these organizations to, to lead this effort. So with that, I definitely support and, you know, we'll look forward to seeing this move forward. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilmember. And of course, you know, it's, it's important that we take action on items like this because we are very well aware that in communities like ours, health, access to healthcare is already a barrier and we don't want to make our working-class communities sicker and put them in a position where, you know, they end up, and, and end up bankrupt or, as we know, two-thirds of American bankruptcies are, are due to healthcare bills. But we want to make, we want to strive and make sure that we lead our community towards a healthy path. So with that being said, I'll make a motion to pass item number 11. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? If not, item 11 passes and we'll see the first reading at the next city council meeting. So that concludes our, our official city business and now we can move on to our city council, city clerk, city treasurer, and staff requests and communications. So I did have a couple of requests and I added a couple of more. So speaking about ARP, I wanted to talk about our homeless services. I know that we've been working diligently on, on our, on our homeless efforts and I think that they will come to fruition very soon. One of the things that is mentioned in the ARP is that we can focus on homeless services amongst the housing and, and other inequities during the pandemic. And so I want to make sure that staffs, does allocate some of the, some of these funds towards homeless services and make sure, and also start thinking of ideas on how we can, what we can fund with these that isn't funded by other programs. So I know that we have vouchers, but some of those vouchers might not be able to be given to certain individuals. So maybe we can create a program where, you know, new vouchers can be given to those individuals. I know that we all, we, we, I also want to see if, I also want staff to bring back a report on best practices for overnight parking to make sure that our constituents would be prioritized in, in such a program. And then looking at sewer access, I believe recently there was a resident who reached out to us who lives on a, on a public, on a private street. Sam, I don't know if you remember the name of the street?
Uh, y- yes, I do. So she, she approached us recently by email and she, she came here and had a meeting with us. This is Kalino Street in, in the city of Baldwin Park.
And I think the, at the very least, the majority of the councils are aware of that street. It's a private road, so it stops the city from being able to help them get away from the set tank and into our sewer. So one of the benefits of ARP funding is that you can do upgrades to sewer and it doesn't have to be explicitly on, on public property. It does state that you can do, make these improvements on private property as well. And I believe that that was, that's been one of the issues and I think that this is the perfect opportunity. From what I understand, the city has some, some almost practically ready plans. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. So the city has, over the last, a- a- and I do mean decades, they've been working on trying to figure out how to bring sewer to that, that street. So we do have a set of plans that are shovel-ready for sewer, storm drain, and street improvement. The, the use of public funds has always been the biggest hurdle. They will need to dedicate the street to the city in order for us to be able to use public funds to make those improvements. However, I, I, I think that you are correct, that there is, you know, some, something in the ARPA that would maybe allow it to be on, on private property to make those improvements and we can do the research and, and study that.
Yeah, so I definitely would like for us to do the research, confirm, and if so, then we can bring that item and, and get working on that for that. It's a small, a small community of those neighbors, right? And I think it's been affecting them during COVID as they, they're trying to stay home more often and sometimes a set use limits them. And then I did receive a, an email from the COG recently and they are accepting letters of interest for extra funding for services from, from funds from the COG. So I wanted Manny to look into it and if the programs that we're offering qualify for that extra funding, then we can sign a letter of interest and start seeing if we can get some of that funding here so we don't have to use our, our own funding and we can go further with it. And then as I mentioned earlier, I know that we're all worried about social distancing and, and, you know, but we want to run official, official city business in the right way. And, you know, we've talked about upgrading our chambers and I believe that this brings the opportunity to upgrade our chambers, but also expand so that there is access to what's going on in here outside through visuals and audio. And, you know, of course, some benches, some seating. So this way we are able to keep the distance in here, but people who would not fit here because, due to our limited capacity, can still be near the chambers and still be a part of the meeting.
Mayor?
Yes?
Just to piggyback on that, when I was out there speaking to some residents, I was approached by Commissioner Ricardo Vazquez with the same idea of placing chairs out here in the median area here as an overflow. We talked about possibly bringing a monitor, a TV monitor. The seniors, I believe, have one that could possibly be transported. So that was just another idea that he came up with. Want to give him the credit for it.
Yeah, yeah.
Mayor?
Yes?
And with that, that's why I think it's so important that we go ahead and, and fund that money that they're needing to upgrade the systems. And with that upgrade, we can provide the speakers outside and the monitors that are, that are needed so that we can provide better service for our residents that are not able to come in here to protect them.
Yes, and not to mention, this way our microphones get upgraded and they don't go in and out.
Right, exactly.
So, um, so Sam, you know, I definitely want to, if, well, first, if council doesn't have any concerns regarding that, I think it's clear direction for you. I know that, I know that we were talking about storage for, for city clerk and we were kind of debating on, on where it could go. You know, we, we actually, Mayor Protem and I toured the Public Works yard and I think Public Works itself is actually above capacity and, you know, so you yourself are having storage issues. And so we've been thinking about a good location for it. I know that we've considered the third story, we've considered rooms within, within the, the hall itself. And I think one of the things that the, that our staff can explore is actually the little parcel, that, the parcel that belongs to the city, right? Adjacent where PD parks their, some of their excess vehicles. But I know PD is also out of storage and running out of space, so we can potentially create some space for, for, for city clerk and our PD.
Mayor, I was gonna ask something. You were talking about the sewer lines earlier. I know, Sam, is there other streets with that same situation that don't have sewer lines within our city limits and that are private? I'm sure there is because there's quite a few little private streets, right? And so can we research those areas as well? I don't know how much funding we can allocate, but to see how many of those areas we can help out because I'm sure they all run into the same situation that they don't have sewer lines and there's problems with their lines, please?
Yes, absolutely. We do have similar private streets. Elizabeth comes to mind where they have a similar issue there. So that is a great idea and I think we can start doing that research.
And then you also said, because there are, there are private streets, so we can't go in there and fix the street because it doesn't belong to the city. What needs to be done in order for us to obtain those streets? Is it, is it a difficult legal process or how does that work?
So i- i- it is, and, and maybe Robert can speak to it, but i- i- it is a process. They have to legally dedicate that land to the city.
Okay.
Once that land becomes city property, then now we can go in there and, and use public funds to make improvements.
So another direction, if we could also find out what's more or less the cost of dedicating those streets to the city so we can take control of them because they are our residents, although they're in a private street, they're our residents and I have seen some of those little streets that are not well taken care of. And if they can be dedicated, a street at a time, of course, because I'm sure it would become costly. Dedicate a street at a time, every budget, so we can start fixing all of our streets and our residents don't have that type of problem. And, and it just doesn't seem fair to say to them, well, we can't fix your street because it's a private street, but yet they're our residents and they pay taxes. So this doesn't make sense to me. So we can look into that, please?
Yes, City Attorney?
Hi, Mayor. Vice Mayor, in response to that question, Vice Mayor, there is a legal process. It's not that complicated. I mean, as Sam said, there's a process and, you know, we've done that before. Sometimes the real problem is not all of the residents are willing to dedicate their part of the street. In fact, the one that we're talking about doing right now with the ARP funds, the reason why we have not done that before is because there's one resident that won't dedicate. And unless you get all of them, and I think in this case, there's 13 or 14 of them, unless you get all of them to dedicate their portion of the street, you know, you really can't do it. So sometimes that's a little bit of an impediment regarding getting everybody on board to actually dedicate it to the city rather than the process of dedication itself.
This is when the good sales pitch comes in, you let them know all the benefits of doing that, that way now it belongs to the city and we're responsible for maintaining that. I'm sure if they understand all of that, they would be more willing to, just having those conversations so they can understand what it needs to be done so we can make sure that their streets have lighting, have a good pavement and, you know, are walkable for them. That's all we need to do, or try at least.
Yeah, and I, and I think there has been some issues in the past, like I know Ben was involved where they're just, they're very adamant about the street. But, you know, if, if the residents are willing to work with us, I think the, the city should take that as an opportunity to help them out for the long run. And I did have one more comment and I, I think I've talked to this, to our, to our CEO about this. And one of the, one of the things I've, I've put a lot of thought into is that our city executive team is not structured in a general way, the way the rest of the cities are structured around us. And so I believe that that might be because, from my understanding, we didn't have a city manager in the early 90s. So there was only an executive team and so the executive team reported to our council. We now have a city manager, but I believe that under the ordinance or the structure that we have, our executive team still reports to the council and not exactly to our city manager. And I think that that kind of might be leaving some room for, for problems or miscommunication. But I would like our staff to bring us a staff report, see what other cities are doing, maybe get best practices and, and maybe even a legal view on pros and cons to our systems compared to others. And that was, that was my list. So if any other council members have any questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, I actually have a request.
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. And this is for staff and probably for Sam, is if we can do an assessment, you know, using the AR, ARP funds in regards to the wifi, doing a wifi mesh in and around our, our city facilities, but specifically our parks, to see what we can do to help enhance some free wifi, you know, to our residents. Again, we're, we now live in a digital world, so that's just another way of how people could help, you know, experience the outdoors, being connected, which sounds, you know, oxymoron, but if we can just kind of look at that and, and provide us a roadmap of what that would look like for expenditures for future CIP. So if we just look at that, we'd appreciate that. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
I have one more thing.
Yes, Mayor Fortem?
Yes, thank you. A report or let me know, let us know what our grant processes are? How are we doing in the grant writing, grant writing? And how much money are we actually getting from these grants? I want to make sure that we're getting as much money as possible from the grants and that we're getting the best service possible. If you can give me a report of how much grant money we've received in the last few years? Same person? Do you know if it's the same person doing our grants? Is it one person, two companies? Have any idea?
Yeah, so it's, it's a, it's various partners. So we do have a retainer, a, a California consultant who does a lot of our grants. My shop in particular, we go after our own grants. We do some of our own grant writing and we've been successful doing that over the years. So it, it, it depends and over the last five years, it's been a mixture of us getting our own grants and other, you know, other agencies helping us.
So that's great to know. I would like to see the comparison, you doing your own grants, how much money are you getting on these grants for submissions and how much the companies that we have writing the grants, how much money are they providing? And what, are they really seeking all the grants possible out there or are they just limiting, you know, an amount? So I want them to be able to seek as many grants as possible for our city. Give me a report, if you can have a clear amount dollar of how much we're paying for our city.
I was going to say, Mayor Fortem, that my impression as of now is that California Consulting could do a lot more for us. We, I think we've been limiting ourselves perhaps because we know it's going to cost us money to pay them, but we want to make sure that we don't lose out on grants just because we don't have the ability to pay them for the service. So I think we will look at that as well.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Great.
Eric, I may?
Yes, Councilmember Damian?
Thank you, Mayor. And I apologize for this because I received notification from Senator Susan Rubio's office after the agenda posted about funding that is available. It is to my understanding that the availability of the funding is for a limited time only. I don't want to lose the funding if we're able to receive it. So I would like to give direction to staff so that they can position the city to receive the funding recently made available by the state of California for the creation of open space through the efforts of Senator Susan Rubio's office.
You know what the amount of money is?
Yeah, I believe it's $6 million.
I have a question about that. Is there a process? Do we have to accept that money? How, what is that process?
From my understanding, I believe it would be staffer Enrique, maybe you can touch up on that.
Yeah, I think that's, that's part of what you're directing us to do, is to investigate and research quickly how we access the money, what the process would be, so that we can move quickly on not losing out on the opportunities since, you know, this, once the state gets moving on their budget stuff, it's, it goes fast.
Any more comments?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Garcia?
Speaking of recreation and community services, I want to acknowledge our director, Manny Garrio, and congratulate him on his daughter's wedding recently. And, you know, Manny is such a proud father. He, he takes even more pride in his family than he does in our community and that's, that's quite, quite a lot. So we just want to congratulate him on his, his daughter's wedding and marriage and expanding family and just wish them all the best on behalf of the city. And then second, I did want to mention that I received a, I guess, a text message from Ana Estevez. And if you recall, Ana lost her son very tragically. She grew up in Baldwin Park, attended Baldwin Park High School. Her family lived on Main Avenue. And she was the mother of a beautiful young child who unfortunately was murdered by his father. And so she's been a very strong activist when it comes to, you know, crime against children and, and domestic violence and so forth. She did ask if she could come before the council to give a presentation and it's regarding the DA's office. I did tell her that we don't take any political positions historically, but, you know, I think we would be open to at least hearing her, you know, her presentation and what other cities have done with regard to her presentation and her activism. So I just wanted to mention that here because, you know, she did reach out and I don't know if she reached out to any of you, but I, I was going to go ahead and put her on the agenda. Again, you know, informing her that we don't typically historically take political positions when it comes to specific offices. So anyway, just wanted to run that by all of you and get your thoughts and, you know, put that on the agenda perhaps at the next meeting. The other thing I did want to, I did want to ask Robert because we were talking about Kalino and Elizabeth and some of these private streets. And is there a way that we can change the ordinance that requires 100% of the property owners to approve the dedication of the private street or can we go with the percentage?
That's an interesting question, Councilmember Garcia, in terms of if we didn't have 100% of the street, then we could do work on the part of the street that we owned, but we couldn't do work on a part of the street that we didn't own. And whether or not that would prevent us from actually putting in a storm drain or what we could or couldn't do, it's, I'm sure it's something that I could work with Sam on to get you an answer to that. But it's, it's an interesting question and a lot of it would depend on, I think, how much of the street we actually owned. For example, in the current street, what's the name of the street with the art project?
Kalino.
Kalino. With Kalino, you had one property owner on one side of the street that owned several different lots. And then you had the other property owners on the other side of the street that comprised multiple, multiple property owners. So there's one property owner on this side of the street, he's the one that didn't want to dedicate. So we, we literally lost that whole half of the street and we could, we, we only had the people on this half of the street. In a situation like that, it would probably be very difficult because while it's not 100%, it's actually less than 50% because that person owned 50% of the entire road. So I think there'll be some different circumstances that we'd, in iterations that we'd have to work through and go over with you, but we can certainly do that.
Okay, okay, yeah. Because I, I was under the impression that of the 14 property owners on Kalino, that we needed 100% of their support in order to dedicate the private street. But I understand it goes off of the percentage of ownership along that private street. So that's, that's what it sounds like.
That is correct, but again, we'll, we'll get some specifics for you and we'll, we'll, we'll get either you a report or give you a call and go over with you.
Okay, thank you. That's all, thank you.
Thanks. And so regarding the presentation, I think there needs to be discussion amongst the council. You know, there's been a handful of groups that have reached out to myself and I don't know of any other council members. We've not allowed anybody to bring that topic here to city hall. As, as I said, it's, I was used to, it's a very political one. I'm not entirely sure that the council has ever taken positions on this like before. So I do believe that that would just be maybe a more longer discussion.
And just again, for the, for the conversation of the present, is it the presentation on sexual abuse and our domestic violence workshop that she does, Councilmember Garcia? Or is it in regards to the office itself?
I wouldn't, I couldn't tell you because I didn't ask for her specifics. All I know is that she's given a presentation to more than 26 cities and so it would be more of a receive and file versus a receive and take action.
Perhaps if, if you wouldn't mind, maybe you can provide that information to our CEO and he can circle back with her to determine, you know, what type of presentation it is. If it's just a general service presentation, then that's perfectly fine. But if it's a political, in any nature of, you know, advocating against or for, you know, whoever's, who's ever in that office, in the DA, then, you know, I, I would lean towards saying no. But if it's a presentation in and around services that the DA is providing or other services in around that, then I'm open that, to that conversation like anything else.
Okay. So at this point, I believe we are done with our comments. I will make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second? Any objections? No, not city, uh, meeting adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, Councilman.
Good night, everyone.